The following program was produced by an independent community producer. The opinions expressed do not necessarily reflect those of the ECAT staff or board of directors.
Throughout our candidate forums this year, many of you have stated your preference for people who can think independently and outside of the box to solve the problems ahead of us. In a brief moment, we'll speak with Mr. Will Anoa, who's running for Boston City Councilor at large. Mr. Anoa has extensive experience in government, working for different city departments and different Boston mayors. As an organization, SPOA does not endorse political candidates. Therefore, this conversation is not an endorsement of Mr. Anoa's campaign by SPOA. Moreover, SPOA extends an open invitation to all candidates to discuss their housing views with us, whether they're running for city council or other offices. We bring you these conversations for educational purposes so that you can get to know the candidates and vice versa. But ultimately, it remains up to you, the voters, to decide upon the merits of the candidates' positions. Mr. Anoa has presented himself as one such candidate who can think outside the box. Could he be the candidate for you? Stay tuned to find out. Hello, everyone. My name is Amir Shasavari. I'm the Vice President of the Small Property Owners Association, also known as SPOA, which brings you episode 18 of SPOA Housing Policy Series. This is where we discuss property rights and all things real estate. I'm happy to welcome Mr. Will Anoa, who is running for City Councilor at Large in Boston. Will, it's great to have you with us.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's great to be here.
Mr. Demetrius Salpaglu is the CEO of Boston Pads and a SPOA member. He's also been a frequent panelist on the program since it began. It's great to have you back, Demetrius.
It's a pleasure to be here again.
And we have Mr. Tony Lopes, who is the Principal of M7 Real Estate Group. I hope I said that right, Tony.
Perfect.
And Tony, Tony joined SPOA recently, so it's great to have you here in more ways than than one Tony. Thank you.
Thanks for having me on.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to begin by reminding you to please donate to the Small Property Owners Association. You can do that by going to www.spoa.com/join. We're at a critical juncture now where a lot of hostile housing proposals are floating around Beacon Hill. And so, as members of the small business community, who provide a valuable service to our renters and other businesses that rely on us, we really need your help. We do work hard to bring you this program, to bring you monthly newsletters, regular email updates about policy proposals on Beacon Hill. It's our pleasure to defend your property rights and to come up with reasonable housing policies that benefit both renters and owners alike, but we can't do it without your help or your participation. So please remember to donate at spoa.com/join. And so I'll turn it over to Will. It's great to have you once again, and I just wanted to ask you if you could please tell us a little bit more about yourself and why you're running for City Councilor.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. It's it's great to be here. Thank you for having me on your show this afternoon. You know, again, my name is Will Anoa. I really appreciate this opportunity. I am running for Boston City Councilor at Large. And just just a little bit about me, I grew up in the city of Boston. I'm a lifelong Boston resident. I grew up in Mission Hill, you know, back in the early eighties, when Mission Hill, as I like to call it, was Mission Hill. And what I mean by that is I grew up during the Charles Stewart era. For anyone who's very familiar with that time, which was a very rough time in the city of Boston, very divisive at that time, racially divisive between police and black men because of what happened in Mission Hill at that time, where a one Charles Stewart killed his wife and blamed it, you know, as you know, on a black man from Mission Hill. So based on that, it led to a lot of tough times. However, one of the good things that came out of that changed my life forever, where when I went to college, the wife's family had paid all four years of my college. Carol Demady Stewart had her family paid all four years of my college when I went to school at UMass Amherst, which was which was life-changing for me. Upon graduating, I came back to the city of Boston. I worked for Mayor Tom Menino, who pulled me in about 2005. I was his district representative for District Eight, which encompasses all of Back Bay, Beacon Hill, Mission Hill, Fenway, the entire Longwood Medical Area. Did that till about 2012, when I went to law school. Also, at the time, worked for at Northeastern while I was going to law school, for a former city council named John Tobin and Ralph Martin. Funny thing, Ralph was the DA during the Charles Stewart era, which is funny how things come full circle. Before I graduated, Marty, or just as I was graduating, Marty Walsh picked me up, and I came to work for the city of Boston again, this time as the Housing Commissioner at Boston Inspection Services. I did that for about five years, but while I was there, my job was mainly to implement the state sanitary code, work with landlords, developers, you know, from the housing point, you know, I was the Housing Commissioner. Into about five years after that, I was promoted to be the Executive Director and Commissioner of the Office of Fair Housing Equity and Civil Rights, where my job primarily was to basically be HUD for the city of Boston. I was a watchdog of it, basically prosecuted any housing discrimination cases, public accommodation discrimination cases. I drafted a lot of housing policy. I worked with many real estate agencies and brokers and housing agencies. So I really got a deep understanding of housing, how it works, how things, you know, how things really go, so to speak. So my mind is very different from a lot of people's when it comes to housing, because housing isn't very sexy on its face until you get into the weeds of it and understand how it really works, you know. Currently, right now, I am at Boston Water and Sewer. I am a lawyer for Boston Water and Sewer, but I'm also the executive, excuse me, the Director of Health and Safety. So this is Will in a nutshell, and I'm sure we'll peel back more of the onion as we go along.
Will, thank you very much. That's a great introduction. You have an amazing background, and I'm intrigued by what you said, among other statements you made, when you said that housing appears sexy until you you get into the weeds. And I think that because it can be complex, I mean, the solutions are simple, but when you start to elaborate upon different issues and when we try to explain to people how the business of providing housing actually works, sometimes you lose people because it gets it gets technical, you get into the weeds, and I think the media doesn't always understand it. And that's why a lot of folks in the general public likely come away with a very superficial understanding of what's going on. But that superficial understanding is also dangerous because it leads people to think about the wrong solutions that actually make the situation worse for everybody, and that's what we're seeing up on Beacon Hill. But before I go there, for those people watching, and I'm sure that a lot of your supporters will hopefully see this too, and they might not know much about our organization, so I'll just explain a little bit. The Small Property Owners Association got started in 1987 by a group of mom-and-pop business owners who were fed up with all the abuses that occurred during the rent control era, which at the time applied to Boston, Cambridge, and Brookline. They got together with the idea of overturning it, and eventually they did overturn it at the ballot box in 1994. Owners were prevented from collecting their hard-earned rental income by rent control boards slash rent control tribunals, which viewed people in our business as being the villains automatically, regardless of the context of the situation. So the tenants were always right, the owners were always wrong, and thus owners couldn't collect their hard-earned income, properties fell into disrepair. The shortage of supply that resulted from these draconian measures caused rental prices to go up and operating costs to go up, expenses went up for everyone. And it also became practically impossible for owners to remove problem tenants who were uncooperative, either by willfully not paying rent, committing vandalism, harassing the owners and the other tenants in these properties. And so as a result, it put everybody in a difficult position, and it made it impossible for the owners. It led to property damage, and it wasn't fair to the other renters who depended on people like us to provide them with safe, reasonable housing accommodations. And so the rent control tribunals abused the property owners by issuing decisions that were very extreme. In one instance, to correct a very minor code violation inside a basement, they ordered the property owner to lift the house well above its foundation, several feet up into the air. And the property owner was so shocked by that that he passed away from a heart attack the next morning. In other instances, the property owners who wanted to get permission to make repairs, including repairs that the tenants wanted, were denied. In one instance, one of the rent control officials told the property owner who asked for permission that the repair wasn't necessary. And when the owner challenged that decision, the rent control tribunal member turned off the recording because in those days, these sessions were recorded on audiotape. He turned off the recording, and he told the owner that if the owner persisted in complaining, he would not see one penny of the rent that he was charging, and he would never see a single penny of rent again. The rent would be canceled altogether. And then, after the owner was silent, the official turned the recording back on. And so these tribunals had the power to freeze the rent and to outright deny the rent, and they did that. To say that it was a horror show is truly an understatement. So ultimately, and thankfully, it was done away with at the ballot box. But we have activists who are pushing for it again. And I think people forget history, they don't pay attention to it. And naturally, there are tenants who are under pressure because rent prices are up, and we want to help them out, definitely. But there are also property owners who are under pressure due to the lack of supply, which has resulted in higher operating costs for those property owners who are swallowing a lot of expenses now. So our position is that rent control is not the answer. We have to focus on increased housing production while finding alternative ways to give relief to both renters and owners in the process. And so we are all about finding a series of balanced solutions to create a level playing field to help owners and renters alike. It's not an us versus them, but when you see how activists are going at it, it's very much an us versus them situation, it's a polarized situation. And that's what we're fighting against because we have to think about what's good for everyone. So having said that, I'll turn it back to you. When it comes to the issue of rent control, what's your position on that? And what's your position on the state of affairs about affordability in Boston?
So, thank you. That's a really, really good question and quite an important question, Amir. And I will say that, you know, housing is the number one issue right now facing the city of Boston. It's it's we are in a housing crisis, quite all right. I do not support rent control. And the reason I don't support rent controls for all the reasons you said, and most people don't really understand that rent control hurts mom-and-pop landlords, you know, and this is the whole reason we got rid of it, small landlords, if you will. You know, this is the whole reason we got rid of it and why Tom and Nina also outlawed it or by executive order or what have you back then, or did what he did to support it being abolished at the ballot box. Because of what it does, you know, it creates a situation that most people don't realize that, you know, this is some people's only income, mom-and-pop type landlords or people who have bought it for investment property, they've retired, this is all they have. And once you do that, you know, property taxes go up. They, there's so much wear and tear that happens in a unit that they have to keep up with that if you cap it at a certain amount of money, they're not going to be able to do that, you know? Then they end up getting into, it becomes a double-edged sword because now what ends up happening is now they get into trouble with the city because they're not able to keep up with, you know, the things that the state sanitary code demands of you to do in order before you turn over a unit. So it has a lot of adverse effects, and the public isn't really aware of this. The public is not astute when it comes to this because rent control, yeah, sounds good. It sounds sexy on its face, right? Because we do, we are in a housing shortage and we are having a housing crisis. My position has been affordable housing is one thing, you know, and people always talk about affordable housing. Unfortunately, most of the city councilors don't know anything about, in fact, none of them, I don't think, really know anything about housing. And that's why they go around supporting some of the things they do because they themselves, God forgive me, are not astute when it comes to this topic. They hear something, oh, that sounds good, let's run with it. And it's like, wait a minute, did you, and this is the thing that annoys me with the current city council is that all the information you just gave lives in City Hall. The city clerk has this information, but no one thinks to say, oh, let's call the clerk and find out what happened or check out what the ordinance, like, all that information lives in that place. That place is a, is like our library of Congress for the city of Boston. So much history lives in City Hall, but people who are there don't access it for their own edification and learning. And so they they jump on the bandwagon on some of these things. Now, there are two things, affordable housing is one thing, but here's the problem with affordable housing that everybody touts. You gotta be poor to get into affordable housing, you gotta be poor to stay inside of it. And that's based on city policies because if you make a couple of dollars more, let's say you you make $5,000 more, maybe you got a promotion, you're gonna lose your housing. You understand what I'm saying? You're gonna lose your housing. So it creates a cycle of poverty because people are like, oh, my God, do I take this promotion and try and move up as you're supposed to? Or do I duck it and stay where I am so I can keep a roof over my head? And nobody should ever have to make that type of decision. That's 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 inhumane in and of itself. No one should ever have to make that type of decision because we're supposed to have, I mean, it's constitutional, right? The pursuit of happiness, right? You're supposed to move forward in life. That's what America is all about, that's what the American dream is all about, picking yourself up by the bootstraps and moving forward. But yet we have policies that actually prevent that, and no one is really talking about that and looking at that. So that's one issue in and of itself. And don't get me wrong, you always need, you always have people who are on the most, on the lowest end of the financial spectrum, and you'll need affordable housing for them because you have people who are veterans and are disabled. You have seniors who've worked their whole lives, and now, you know, they've retired or what have you. But the real answer to what we're looking, what I've been preaching is workforce housing, workforce housing, building workforce housing, and how you do it, as I've always said, that the city of Boston should partner with developers in a private partner, excuse me, private-public partnership to build workforce housing. The whole 20% of affordable thing that they did was, I've said it and I keep saying it over and over again, that was for political grandstanding, right? 20% of nothing is nothing. It's simple. Because if you set something at a price or you put in place a policy and the institutions that actually control it, meaning the banks, right? They're not giving developers money to do this because they're like, how are you gonna make this work? The numbers don't match. If you do 20% affordable, the numbers don't match. This is not gonna work out at all. So banks are not going for those kind of loans with developers. So my solution is, let's go back to the 13% that we, because we know that that works. You can make that work. You understand what I'm saying, versus the 20? Because again, no one is building, so 20% of nothing is nothing, you know? If we go back to the 13, you can still do the affordable housing that the city was doing. But then, when it comes to workforce housing through public-private monies, you can build workforce housing, where you can actually control the rent, you know, and it'll be income-based, you know? The study we did in 2000, so we passed our ordinance in 2022, the Fair Housing Ordinance, but it took about seven, eight years before we were able to actually pass it. And it was a study, you know, called the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing. Under my office, Boston became the first city to actually do this and became a national model. And all it did was it looked at all the things that are impediments to housing. You understand what I'm saying? And it was clear that nobody should pay more than 20 or 30% of their income for housing. But how that works is the average person in Boston makes anywhere between $59,000 and $61,000 a year. That's it. You understand what I'm saying? Boston got lumped in with Newton, Wellesley, and Brookline, where the average person in those areas make about $125,000 a year. These are old, antiquated numbers that HUD used since the seventies that Boston has never went back to change or create its own AMI to deal with some of these issues. And that would significantly deal with a lot of these issues. But in any event, if you build housing that's, say, for people or a household that makes anywhere from, say, $60,000 to $250,000 a year, you can you can actually make this work because what happens is you'll never charge people more than 20, 20, 30% of their rent, I mean, excuse me, 20, 20 to 30% of their income for those for those units, you see? So that means the better, so the better you do, the more rent you're gonna pay.
Right.
You understand what I'm saying? And developers can still make their money. This 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 model can work, you know, through public-private partnerships. And no one is talking about this, rather they're they're doing things that are very knee-jerk reactions, shooting from the hip without actually thinking about some of the things they're doing, you know? Like the recent thing they did, which you'll probably get to, the, what is it? That landlords cannot ask tenants to pay, excuse me, if they're gonna renew their lease 90 days before the time, which again, is kind of, is very, was very, how can I say this in a nice way?
I tried to say it in a nice way, by the way, but go ahead.
It wasn't a very smart thing to do because the reason it wasn't a very smart thing to do is because you have a lot of students that live in the city of Boston. It's cheaper to live in the city than it is to live on campus. So and many of these kids go away to different states or different countries. We have a great international student population that travel once, you know, May comes around. Between, so between May and end of August is three months. So where are they supposed to live? What are they supposed to do? That means you can't ask until June, at least. Let's see, so you have July, June, July, August.
Yep.
In some cases, July, August, September, depending on how school gets out, and...
You're literally asking them to fly from, like, grad, you know, most of them finish in May, right? And then what do they do? Fly back to Japan, fly back to, we have 122 countries that come to Boston, you know, for education here. It's an international city. And they're gonna spend $5,000 for a ticket to Japan or Spain or who knows where, right? And then they're gonna fly back, and then they're gonna find an apartment rushed in three months when they could have done it while they're here.
Exactly.
It's, it, you're so spot on, Will. It's, there's so many policies that feel good, virtue signal, you know, make everybody feel good. But they, but they, I think what I what I struggle with, and I think that you see that, is that they're not reaching out to business leaders to ask an opinion first, that they exist in this echo chamber where they're all talking to themselves, but they, well, maybe we should call an expert that knows something about this and then hear the other side. And then a lot of this, I think, tension could be resolved so you could focus on the bigger issues. And housing, I think, is certainly one of them as well. I think there's a lot of innovative ideas. I really love where you're going with that idea earlier that you were suggesting, because one of the things that I think is very interesting is, I think you're right, they shouldn't move, shouldn't be able to be kicked out of a place when they're making money if they get a promotion. Maybe if there was a plan where it allowed them to put it into a health savings account or some kind of, I don't call it forced savings account because that sounds kind of strange and not right, but some kind of interest-bearing account where they allow it to accumulate, not spend it on vacations, but build up their own reserve while they're living there to go buy their first property. I think a lot of people would love that idea. Rather than forcing them out of the housing, let them save money and buy a property and live the American dream. So there's, but the thing that, I think the thing that's interesting to me is that, and I think what a lot of people want is, you know, access and transparency with with city councilmen, state reps, to be able to say, I got a great idea. Do you want to hear it? Take, I got 10 minutes. And I think for, it's really nice that, you're always approachable on so many things, which I really love. But I think one of the things is just being able to not have to talk to people through other people, but to be able to walk in the door and say, 10 minutes, I'll explain everything, this is how it looks, I think could do a lot when when city officials and everyone engages the, and that's when you get your best public-private property, you know, partnerships because the trust is established and the communication's flowing. And I think that's what I see, I love the idea of a private-public partnership where business leaders are actually asked to the table to craft it together from the jump rather than reacting to something.
That's right.
I have a couple of questions too, but before I go forward, I wanted to turn it over to Tony if you have any comments or questions.
Yes, definitely. So you make a great point, Will. So not only are they not consulting the business leaders, they're not consulting the statistics. And as you mentioned, all these statistics and data are sitting right in City Hall, but nobody refers back to them to see, has this worked in the past? Let's do some research. Let's put a plan together that makes sense. And you make a great point as well. I personally know a family whose assets, their retirement account exceeded the $75,000 for their particular program in the apartment they were living in. And that disqualified them. So their their savings over time went up here over $75,000, and they no longer qualified. So where they do, they have to either reduce the the amount of the assets, which is counterproductive. They eventually end up leaving and paying higher rents, but then they stop being able to save money, which is also counterproductive. So it makes a lot of sense.
Very counterproductive. And I think, Will, when you were talking about qualifying for affordable housing and how someone in a family getting a promotion would actually bring them harm, which is just totally backward, I've also heard that families staying together would also be a problem. I've heard stories where the dad or maybe the mom had to split up from the rest of the family, the kids, and go live somewhere else just so that the children could receive aid. Is that the case?
Yeah. That 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 has happened, you know, that was definitely something that lots of policies like that were pushed around welfare, especially in the eighties, seventies, and eighties, you know, that if there was a male living in the household, you couldn't receive it. So many people, you know, hid their significant others or had to kick out their husbands or boyfriends, whatever, their spouses or significant others that were men in order to get aid from, you know, the government for for section aid or for welfare, yes, you know? You see, again, this reminds me, I don't know if you guys, you guys might, you guys are in the housing world, so you might be familiar with the book The Color of Law, you know, which if you've ever read it, it deals with some of these issues as the the root cause of a lot of the social issues we're currently dealing with and struggling with. You know, the city of Boston isn't very honest about a lot of things, and I think that's part of what my campaign is about, you know? What ends up happening is that instead of pushing or having real common sense solutions to the housing issue, it's like we're kicking the can down the road or people are talking about whatever sounds cool but isn't cool in practice. The part Demetrius talked about with helping them save so they can buy a house, you know, there are two things that come to mind. Normally, I don't encourage the city of Boston to do things that other cities and towns, excuse me, that other cities do because that's how we got into trouble with bike lanes and all this other kind of stuff, which is this crazy traffic that we deal with right now, you know? Because we're not New York, we're not Chicago, not LA. Those cities are 10 times us and more. But in LA, they did do something called Welfare to Work back in the nineties, which is that if you're on welfare, they allow you to work, and they slowly weaned you off of welfare. You understand what I'm saying? You can do something like that. You understand what I'm saying? You can do something like that um in the housing world, in the housing market. You can totally do that. You know, where you could slowly, you know, allow someone to keep making more and more money, where they may pay a little bit more rent. Until they're able to get out of the affordable housing situation or they, and they would just jump right into the workforce housing. Group, which would not affect their housing. You understand what I'm saying? So uh, these are things that they can do. One of the fallacies that when it comes to housing. The city of Boston touts that people don't really know is this first-time homebuyers business. Yeah, it does work to a degree, but see, there are deed restrictions. That you're not able to, that, that these deeds restrictions last for about fifty years. So if you're a first-time homebuyer, you, you, and they tell, oh, well, we're, you know, helping people get generational wealth. But when you look at it, it's not really, because for fifty years, if you, let's say, a woman in her forties or fifties is able to get a house. Fifty years, you're a hundred. You might not even be here. Then with the deed restriction, you can't pass it on to your kids. And then when you do, and if you do, and if you do, if you're lucky to meet it, you can't sell for more than ten or fifteen, fifteen percent of what you bought it for. And you have to sell to somebody who's just as situated as you were, meaning a first-time homebuyer, certain type of income, that kinda thing. So, you know, it's actually a setback. It doesn't, it doesn't help the way they uh tout it to um be. The city council held a case on it in um October of twenty twenty-four, where you can go look at it. Where the, the city's being, is about to be sued for this problem. How do I know my mother's one of them? That was part of this. You, you see what I'm saying? And now she has a deed restriction that's up to thirty years. And she's like, what? I mean, excuse me, fifty years? And she's like, wait a minute, what is this? You know, my mom is, is, is um, is in her, I wanna say, my, my mom's about seventy. She bought this house when I was on my way to college, so that would have put her probably in her fifties, somewhere, or late forties, you know. So. You, you, you know.
Yeah, we need a lot of reform. Uh, that's clear, that's clear. And I think earlier, when, you know, you were putting. You were searching for the nice term and you, you, you did describe it nicely. We do have people in government at the city level and at the state level. Who suffer from what we could also call economic illiteracy. Uh, they've not, and Demetrius has said this before too. They've never run a business. They don't know what it means to maintain a budget, to put people to work. To, to keep track of what's coming in, what's going out, whether, whether or not they're running things efficiently. And uh, you know, recently, we were at, SPOA participated in a rent control hearing at the State House. And as we know, as of yesterday, they, they're coming out with a ballot initiative now again. But uh, this was Senator Pat Jalen's bill that was uh being discussed at the State House. And so SPOA went to testify and Tony was on that panel. And, you know, we made the points that, that had to be made. And then Representative Mike Conley spoke afterwards. And he said, he made the argument, and he actually said this, and he said it before, to my amazement. He said that rent control is a good policy and a moderate policy, just because it was there. Simply because it existed back in nineteen twenty. So because it was there, it's a good policy. It's okay. You have nothing to worry about, ladies and gentlemen. And, you know, I was thinking, well, look, we've had a lot of other policies on the books. Throughout history that were really bad, you know, segregation, redlining.
Exactly.
Being restricted as to who you could pick as a marital partner, for example. And when people became enlightened, they got rid of those policies. And people became enlightened enough to get rid of rent control at the ballot box in Massachusetts, because it wasn't working. And even though activists are saying that it was still highly popular in the cities that had it. What we do know is that in the city of Cambridge, which gave birth to the most radical version of the policy. About ten years later, around twenty oh three, the people of Cambridge had a chance to take a citywide vote to bring back rent control. To send a home rule petition to Beacon Hill uh to get the ban removed. And by an overwhelming margin, once the people of Cambridge had a chance to experience what life was like after rent control ended. They voted to reject rent control and to keep it buried in the cemetery of failed ideas. By the overwhelming margin, get this, the overwhelming margin of sixty-one percent to thirty-nine percent. In the very place that gave birth to the most radical version of the policy in Massachusetts. The argument right there, that ends it right there. However, we have activists who still wanna make believe. That this is a very popular, moderate policy that's not gonna hurt anybody.
Not a moderate, it's a progressive, it's, it, it, it's a wacky, progressive policy. And in fact, i- i- it's one that doesn't make sense. Whoever said that was moderate, I, 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 I mean. I don't wanna insult anyone, but I, I would like to question their, their level of education wanting to. Or better, yeah, their level of education on the issue. And I would say that, that's a, that's a huge fallacy.
Let me tell you what else he said.
Amir, if you don't mind me interrupting, I, I don't think there's ever been a successful city in America that's implemented rent control. And normally, when you go to these city and state meetings, they talk about, well, this state did this, and this city did that, and this state. And they're always bringing examples of successful implementations in other cities, and they just can't do that. So, you know, the argument in and of itself is baseless, because any place that it's ever been implemented. In the United States, housing production went down in those neighborhoods. Or those areas where they implemented rent control. So it's actually a supply killer, which actually drives the rent up, and they know this.
Precisely.
There's some disingenuousness going on there.
Disingenuousness based on, I, I'll let you speak in a moment. Disingenuousness based on a radical ideology. And I was gonna turn to you, Tony, because Demetrius hit it on the mark and he, he actually covered what I'm gonna ask you next. Because you have the studies and you have the data. What Conley said next was that in New York. He tried to use New York as an example to say that rent control could coexist with housing growth. Because supposedly, New York added one million units during the era of rent control. But Tony, you've spoken to this yourself. What do we know about that and why is Mr. Conley wrong?
So after that comment, I went and did a deep dive in research and looked at studies, research reports. So looked at the Brookings Institution and even looked at, like you mentioned, Demetrius, different cities that have uh. Put rent control in place. So for one, um, less than one percent of the housing in, in New York City is under rent control. And so. Uh, the other, the other side of it is economists overwhelmingly across uh, between Stanford, Harvard, Brookings Institute. They all mentioned that uh it failed. Uh, it leads to reduction of available rental units. It leads to condo conversion. It leads to disincentives to maintain or improve property. Uh, and overall, in every single case, it's failed. And in every single case, it's led to uh worse outcomes for the tenants.
And didn't you say at one point that new construction in New York is exempt from rent control?
That's right. And that's where they saw the growth. All the growth that the New York um experienced was despite rent control. Um, not because of it. And all the properties that enjoyed the, the increase and enjoyed the appreciation was the. Um, the ones that were exempt for rent, from rent control.
Right, right. And you, you do have, we don't have to go over the details, but you do have studies. And we have a sheet that we can send out later detailing how it failed in different parts of the U.S. And, and it also failed in other, other parts of the world. Um, I mean, you, you only have to think back recently to what happened in Minnesota. The tale of two cities between Saint Paul and Minneapolis. The mayor of Saint Paul was pushed by his city council to pass rent control. And sooner than people predicted, businesses, people and businesses migrated to neighboring Minneapolis.
Right.
What happened next startled the mayor of Saint Paul, because the rents in free market Minneapolis went down. As the rents in rent-controlled Saint Paul went up significantly. And so the mayor of Saint Paul looked around and said, what's going on? This wasn't supposed to happen. So he tried to walk it back. But he hasn't been successful in walking it back over two years. And what that tells us. And the people in Massachusetts better be listening carefully to this. What that tells us is that once you go down that road. It's god-awful hard to walk it back, because the politics of the situation. The activists are gonna push and push and push and demand more and more with each passing year. A- and, and that's why it took twenty-five to thirty years to overturn it in Massachusetts. It doesn't mean renters and owners were happy with it. That's propaganda. You know, they couldn't get rid of it. It was too hard to get rid of it. So this is a very crucial time, when we do have to educate people. And we have to talk to people who are willing to be educated. Unfortunately, we can't say that about everybody in our government. But that's why we have people like you, Will, people brave enough, smart enough to step up, to do what's right for the sake of doing what's right.
You, you know, another, thank you. And, and you know, another example of that, which Demetrius can attest to is when I was at ISD. We had student move-in. And we were really trying to wrestle with, you know, how we deal with all the students moving in on, you know, September one. There was trash everywhere between Mission Hill and Fenway and all that. And so we made a deal with the landlords, you know. Instead of giving them green tickets all the time and all this crap, we were like, alright, listen, can you do us a favor? Can you, you know, we would have landlord meetings. And anyone who attended our monthly landlord meetings during moving day. If for any reason they acquired a green ticket, you know, we, we got rid of it. We, we got rid of it. We, 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 we gave them a pardons, because we were like, no, you're working with us. And what happened, we learned, is that many landlords were victims of their own success, you know. And what would happen is that they would have a lot of units, quite all right, and maybe not enough staff to turn everything over, you know, on September one. So we would say, hey, maybe if you made the kids a deal and they could, some of them could vacate a little earlier, what have you, you know, like by. The thirtieth, so you have time to go in, clean the unit, paint it, whatever you can do. You know, as long as you were working with us to meet the state sanitary code, or you started doing things early, we worked with you. You know, um, it wasn't the most perfect solution, but it, it changed the relationship between landlords in the city of Boston. Um, at ISD forever. You understand what I'm saying? So we were able to work together. They were able to say, hey, we have this problem, this problem, think about that. So by being able to sit with them, we learned what it's like to be a small landlord. Oh my God, maybe this isn't as easy as we thought. Because, you know, our system has done something wrong, where it's like, it, 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 it forces people. To be polar opposites, when it doesn't have to be, you know. And what a good example of that is it. You can um, like, because you like business, doesn't mean you, 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 you're not for um. Social justice. Because you um support the police does not mean. Um, you know, you're, 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 you're anti, um, what do you call it? I'm trying to look for the right word to use here. But the point is, we, we get into these extremes. Into these extremes where we pit people against one another. A lot of the activists are almost angry. Or a situation where it's like, they're, they're angry at the people who actually have these um units. Or these landlords, because they don't have. It's almost like pitting the, pitting the haves against the have-nots, instead of saying, let's work together. Let's figure out how we can do this together. Let's look at the policies that we currently have that actually add to this problem, you know. And a- a- again, I, I just keep going back to say that most of the folks who are now elected to elected office. Treat themselves more like celebrities than they do public servants. Because a public servant is a servant for everybody. You understand what I'm saying? Um, there's no crime on you because you're successful. There's no crime on you because you make money. That, that, that's not a crime. That's what you're supposed to do. You know, granted, everybody may not reach the level that some people reach and make money, but that's not a reason to demonize people. Rather to time to say, alright, let's, let's come together and see how we can uh truly, truly work this out. Or do something that is um altruistic, but also, you know, force the city to do its part. And that's just not what it always happened, because if the city went back and changed some of its policies on housing, you'd give people a lot more breaks. The city went back and said, alright, we're gonna invest money instead of in this fricking two million dollar, uh, two hundred million dollar. White Stadium project. Now, White Stadium does need to be redone over fine, but two hundred million dollars for what? Especially at this time? That's money that can be poured into property taxes. That's money that can be poured into housing. That can help the public-private partnership to build something like um, what I call an abundance package, right? Because we need that. An abundance package would look like removing the red tape at ISD. And getting to work yesterday to build something like three, three hundred, like three forty-five Harrison Ave, if you've been to that complex. It's beautiful, but you would do that for workforce housing. You understand what I'm saying? Where you're building three, four, five hundred units a pop. To create workforce housing, because that would um significantly speed up the rush. Boston, believe it or not, is supposed to have built seventy thousand units of new housing by twenty thirty. Excuse me, twenty, yeah, twenty thirty, seventy thousand units by twenty thirty, and we haven't done that. We've only done maybe five, six? So we're like. Four, maybe five percent of the way there, and we're not gonna get there in the next five years at the rate we're going. In fact, it's not gonna happen.
Demetrius, any thoughts?
Yeah, um, you know, Will's a hundred percent right. I, I, I ran into a city official. We were talking about all those plots of land that laid fallow in Ford Hill. There was some in Mission Hill. There was some in Dudley Square, now Nubian Square. And I said, why don't they just release them all? And, you know, not put deed restrictions, not, like, just put them out there transparent, you know, with total transparency on the internet. And anybody can buy them. May the best, you know, just like bid it up, buy it and get going. And I've heard different things like. The, this person in particular said, well, the, the city's concerned about unjust enrichment. And I was like, y- you mean a profit? Like, is that what, so they even have terms that are weird, like unjust enrichment. Like, so the, the lingo, I think, to your point, Will, is that there's some very strange lingo out there. Like, a profit is good if someone makes money, then they're paying taxes, then they're contributing to society. Then they're gonna reinvest that capital and they're going to move forward in their lives. And isn't that the American dream? So I think, I, it, it is a little bit, I don't know where it starts, and that's maybe a bigger, broader conversation. I've always thought maybe, you know, there was some mistakes in the public school system, teaching supply and demand, basic economic theory. And maybe it's been hijacked. And so a lot of these, you know, people that were, are probably really good people. Just haven't, you know, have maybe been taught something that's incorrect. And then it's manifested itself all the way into government twenty-five, thirty years later, and here we are. So I think we, you know, getting back to basics, even teaching, I mean vigorously, supply and demand, free market forces. It's the free market that built America, not government, you know. Government is supposed to be there to provide the infrastructure, to provide the safety. Provide the public services, but you let the private sector lead the way, and, you know, we can get those, those units built. Um, and then my other thought is you bringing up the thirteen percent. Um, from twenty percent. There was a time when we had it even lower than that. And, you know, you, you know, I, I'm almost thinking, we're at drastically low levels, like we've never seen before, in housing being built. And maybe we need to do something radical the other way, like two-year moratorium, no affordable units. So we do a ma, everybody rushes out and does a massive build, and you build a massive amount of supply. Maybe we can emulate Austin. Austin got their rents down twenty-two percent, and they did it through supply, not through, and so I do.
Seventy thousand units of new housing in two years.
I, I mean, i- if we, you know, I'm all for government officials taking field trips to other cities to look at. What market forces could be unleashed so that we emulate massive supply? I think there'd be a different conversation to be had, where landlords would probably be upset in the other direction, where their rents are too low. But the public would benefit from that, right? So, you know, i- it's, it's, for me, it's all about supply. And I think everybody wants affordable housing. It's the levers that we need and how we get there. What I do know is watching the last, you know, four some odd years, we're definitely going in the wrong direction of, of, of providing supply. So my thought process would be, why would five years be any different, or six years, or seven years? Like, if you've tried something for four years and it's not working, m- maybe it's time to readjust. And so, you know, I, I think that thirteen percent is way better than twenty, but I'm open to seeing. seeing different, you know, more radical ideas, maybe just a temporary, two-year, everybody go and build as much as you can, and with no limitations, because the developers that we do talk to quite a bit, they want to build, they can't, the numbers don't work, so I end up with a stack of deals on my desk, just sitting there, with developers calling me, saying, hey, can you move this product? Is there somebody you can sell it to? I don't think I can make a profit on it. What does that tell you? I mean, landlords go through, and developers go through, all that hassle to get to permit stage. Ninety-five percent of them don't want to just sell the paper, they want to go finish the deal and make a profit. So they're already looking at it, in my opinion, as a financial loss, if they're trying to sell it just at the permit stage. Now, there are some people that do make money just by building permits and selling those permits, but that's such a small minority of developers, you know, vis-à-vis looking writ large at the entire real estate community. And so I think, you know, like, it's kind of weird to me that, you know, the city, the state government say, bring in all the developers, we want to hear this, and then go, this is what needs to happen.
You know what? And I thought about this. Another thing the city could do, or the state could do, since they're so into this rent control business, is they can call up landlords or developers, master-lease their property for whatever the market price is, and then charge your, get paid back by charging their rent control for however many years they want to do that. But at least the developer, or excuse me, or the landlord, you've already paid them their money upfront, they can master-lease, you know? It's an idea, and, you know, it's just, my mind is thinking of things I know people have done, but they can master-lease units, and then charge, because as long as the landlord, because that's basically what you do with Section Eight in a lot of ways anyways. So you can basically use that economic model and master-lease a building, or whatever from landlords, you know, pay them what you're supposed to pay them, and then you can charge your rent control.
I've actually seen that successfully implemented through nonprofits, renting out an entire building, and then they're for market rate, and then they utilize their subsidies to rent it out to end-users for lower rates, and that works on that scale. And these are units, they're not large apartment buildings, they're like four, five, ten units, and it works, so it can be scalable.
Yeah.
Speaking of private-public partnerships, I wanted to run this by you, because I think it ties into what you were saying earlier. We have a bill of our own that we're working on that would help renters on the pathway to homeownership. It would work in such a way where the property owner would voluntarily allocate a portion of the rent into an escrow account for the benefit of the renter to put a down payment on a condo or a house. And if you have a tenant who's economically well-off or not interested, you could put that money into a public escrow account based on zip code for renters all over Massachusetts, targeting renters who live in economically challenged communities to get a step up. And in return, the government would step in to provide matching funds while giving the property owner tax relief, in addition to interest-free loans to repair the property, which would also benefit the tenant. So that would create a collaborative, positive relationship between the owner and the government, and the owner and the tenant at the same time. And from the tenant's perspective, I mean, we could join forces to redefine, I mean, speaking of doing something that's radical in the best definition of what's radical, we could radically redefine what it means to pay rent, because from the tenant's perspective, they may be motivated to pay rent and cooperate with the owner if they understand that the payment of rent would actually lead towards their own future, as opposed to throwing their money away. And the private sector, the small business owners, the business owners as a whole, could play a crucial part in providing renters with that future, so that they could have a pathway to generational wealth. And along with that, they could also become the conscientious landlords of the future, the conscientious housing providers of the future, because we're not lords, and I think the whole term landlord is kind of away with, but you see where I'm going. I mean, is that the sort of idea that you would be willing to support in a general sense, along with your other ideas?
I would, that's a very, very, see, that's a very progressive idea, in the terms of progressive in that it's out-of-the-box thinking, and it actually benefits the people who the activists are trying to fight for, in a very, very progressive way, you know? Progressive meaning it's supposed to be progress, right? The things they're doing are not progressive.
Right.
The ideas they have are not progressive, they're regressive. You understand what I'm saying? So maybe they should change their name to regressives.
I say that all the time, they're not progressives, they're regressives with their extreme policies, but yeah.
Exactly. So that is a progressive idea, because what it does, it's a smart way to deal with the problem, again, through a public-private partnership. It's a very, very intelligent way of doing that, thinking outside of the box. That's totally something I would talk more about and definitely love to support, you know? Because it's forward-thinking, that's all I'm trying to say, it's forward-thinking. And that's not what's happening on our current city council. You know, one of the things I used to do when I was in the Office of Fair Housing and Equity is, I constantly had conversations before I would do something with Greg Vassal from the Greater Boston Real Estate Board, right? Because before we wrote policy or passed an ordinance, I'd call him and say, oh, hey, or reach out to someone from SPOA, but I dealt a lot with him, because a lot of our things were massive, on a big, big scale. So we would have to call him and say, hey, we want to do this, what do you think? What are the pitfalls? And he'll say, well, you know what, this is a good idea, but if you do this, you do that, this is where you're going to run into a problem with people, because you're not thinking about this, you know what I mean? We had such a partnership where I was constantly learning, constantly learning, and constantly making sure that any policy we passed, you know, did not have an adverse effect on someone else. Boston is the kind of place, it's almost like playing a game of whack-a-mole. If you hit it the thing here, it's going to pop up here, you hit it there, it's going to pop up somewhere else. So there's a delicate balance, is what I'm trying to say, to how all of this works, and it has to be done with common sense, you know, and diligence, you know? Things have to be well-thought-out, you know, and it requires both sides talking, because again, oftentimes, and this is not a knock on anybody, city councillors, mayors, governors, are, they're not astute when it comes to housing, you know? They pay somebody to tell them what to do with that stuff, or give them stats or whatever, and then they make a decision, but they themselves are not astute when it comes to this kind of thing, so they do not see the adverse effects of some policies they're pushing for. Another thing I've learned since I've been doing this whole campaign thing is that a lot of what people say is crap, you know? They're pushing their own interest, and they do it in the name of fighting for the community or whatever, but I, this campaign has opened my eyes to the real truth about what really goes on. So some of the things, some of the activists who are out there stopping for whatever, they're not pushing for what the policy they're pushing for, because it's truly altruistic, but rather, it's for their own private interest. And that's just the God-honest truth, you know? I'm the kind of person, I'm very blunt, I'm very honest, I'm very straightforward, anything I say, I'm going to back up with evidence and facts, and that's just what's, that's just what's happening. It's, so, a lot of this stuff is political noise, you know? It's a political noise for people can have soundbites, it sounds like they're doing something to get re-elected or get elected, but in the flip side is, they're actually eroding what they're trying to actually do. They're almost pulling the rugs out from underneath themselves in the community without understanding the nature of what they're doing.
Yeah, no, I would agree with that, and I think that everything you said makes total sense, and it's the gaslighting that I don't like, that the media feeds right into the gaslighting that also hasn't done a lot or enough due diligence. I mean, I can tell you personally, I'll spend over an hour on the phone with, and most people are scared to talk to the media, I'll keep talking till I'm blue in the face, to make sure that they actually understand the policy decisions and the impacts of it. And so, you really have to like, look at the whole picture of, you know, and I think that's what you're doing, you're trying to make government better by encompassing all parties, you're absolutely right on the whack-a-mole, I mean, there's always unintended consequences.
Right.
I think one of the things I'd love to see, too, is greater transparency and, you know, direct communication from city councilmen, state reps, whatever, directly to the business leader, and not have to go through proxies of lobbyists. And so I think the lobbyists also get paid quite handsomely, and your lobbyists are always telling you, let me handle it, pay me, I'll go do it. And I think sometimes you're like, well, I think I could do a better job in less time if you just let me explain it, because nobody knows that issue better than me. So then you've got these layers of lobbyists and all these people, to your point, that are all connected to this giant feeder ecosystem, from the media to the lobbyists, all the way down, and you're, and you're, I think you're just like, hey, look, we can streamline this and get things done if we remove some of these layers of misinformation, bureaucracy, all this other stuff, and the city could be so much better. And so, you know, that's definitely what I think you represented, is a direct, transparent look at things for exactly what they are, and it's quite refreshing, because I think that's what a city needs, is no more echo chambers, no more talking to everybody in the, like, this unified, that they never talk to the other party. It's like, I don't see it occurring, and it's not just the housing industry. I'm talking to other people now in other industries that are in Boston, they're telling me the same thing. So why are we operating in a low-communication environment, you know?
Tony, let me turn it over to you.
Yeah, that's right, it's, I totally agree, it's transparency, it also leads to greater efficiency.
Right.
At the end of the day, the solutions are simple. You've got more supply, that leads to lower pricing. What's the quickest and most efficient way to get to more supply? And that starts with communication, you talk with the stakeholders, and you bring everyone to the table and say, hey, this is the problem we have in hand, how do we solve this? What's everyone's take? Let's get educated on this subject, and find out the history, what's worked, what hasn't worked, let's find a solution here. And that happens through communication.
Thank you. Gentlemen, we are about to wrap up, I'll turn it over to Will, if you'd like to make a closing statement.
Yeah, once again, I mean, I want to thank you for having me here, and to your audience, you know, I want to ask, I hope that they have enjoyed this conversation and will vote for me on September ninth and November fourth, you know, and not just vote for me because I'm saying to vote for me, but because I actually have the skills and the common sense to do the job, you know? And I'll just simply say that if they like the way how things are, then keep voting the way they're voting, but if they want a change in the city of Boston, if they believe in their hearts and their minds and in their spirits that their government can do better for them, that we can do better as a city, and we can really, really be public servants, what we're called to be, and help all people, in all means all, not some, not a little bit, not special interest groups, but really all people, regardless of their income status or whatever, but really be an inclusive community, then give me a shot, because that's exactly what I am working for, a one Boston, a united Boston, and a very, very professional city council. So, once again, gentlemen, thank you for this opportunity. You know, housing is my favorite subject, so I could talk about this all day, every day, but I really thank you for this opportunity, and I hope to see you guys soon.
Well, Will, it was great to have you, and given how much you enjoy talking about housing, we'll be happy to have you back in the future if you're available. On that, I want to thank Demetrius Salpoglu and Tony Lopes. Ladies and gentlemen, in the near future, we'll be back with another episode. Until then, I wish all of you well. Thank you very much.